I'm gonna call it to order. And I don't have a chair report of anything of any consequence, other than I want to talk about the article that's being written for the, is it a newspaper? Or how do you, what do you describe that as, Stanley?
Um, God, what would that be? It's, I guess it's an e-mag or an e-posting. It's a newspaper, but it's, it, uh...
Are we all familiar with that, the Cambria?
Cambriaca.
Cambriaca.com? Yeah. Everybody familiar?
Nope.
Oh, you're not, Adolf? Yeah, it's an online newspaper this guy started, I don't know, four or five months ago. And it, yeah, Stanley, you explain it.
Well, Jack, um, Jack, um, is a retired professional educator. And, um, he lives here now. Chris Fox is his wife. Um, and he's trying to find something to challenge him intellectually. And so he, he started this newspaper that because of how, um, how the Cambrian seems to be falling off. Um, so what he's trying to do, it isn't just chit chat and, um, um, uh, you know, like, uh, sell your, your old couch and stuff like that. In fact, it's not that at all. It's, uh, government postings, um, committees, governments, clubs, stuff like that.
Kitty, you wrote a really good article for it almost every week.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jack.
I, I want to encourage it because we do need some central spot for all of us to disseminate information. So, uh, he asked me to, to write this thing. And I did a couple, but it's beyond my scope of what I can handle right now. And Stanley seems to have the writing bug. So I asked Stan if he would write this thing for this, this paper. And which is fine, I don't, I don't care. But I thought maybe we should ask permission or if there needs to be parameters. My position is, is that Stanley is a board member of the PROS and he's writing his opinion of what is going on. And quite frankly, I'm okay with that. How's everyone else feel?
Great.
Can you get, can you give an internet address for this thing?
We'll get it to you.
Thanks.
Hey, Steve, it's John Weigold.
John, there you go, weigh in.
Good morning, sir. Um, so my only, uh, because we have no social media policy right now, uh, my recommendation would be to, in your monthly report to the board, bring this up, uh, as a, uh, potential issue. Because you'll be essentially representing the district in an official capacity. And the board will, um, should have oversight on that. So I would, uh, get their permission.
Do you want to write it, John? No, uh...
I, I can be involved, um, I'm, I'm happy to. But, um, my only point is, you know, the, the board needs to give a, give an okay on something like that. Um, uh, when we're talking about official issues.
I don't get it. I mean, if it, if it's the impression of the meeting and I'm not, um, uh, pitching an opinion about one side or another on an issue, why does the board have to give the da-da, the okay?
Because you're, because you're in an, you're in official capacity as an advisor to the board.
So do you mean, in other words, you're gonna censor anything I write before I can post it?
Not at all. But if you're, you're writing on, in an official capacity, so we, because we have no parameters on that yet, I, that's just my recommendation is to, uh, you know, get, get, get board okay on that.
John, ask, let me ask you a question here, just so that, um, we don't get into a, a problem later on. Uh, the deadline is tomorrow. And my thought was, okay, after the meeting, I'll write it up and I'll post it to Jack. And it can go in and it's basically what we talked about and, you know. But I would not, um, like I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use it as a platform for any of my personal beliefs. But I would be impressionistic about what went on in the meeting.
All right, Joyce, go ahead, weigh in.
John, does Harry get an okay on his article for, uh, around the neighborhood or next door? Does he have to have an approval? Harry Farmer?
Harry's a board member.
I know, but he has opinions that are...
He doesn't, he doesn't, but he doesn't need approval, he's already a board member.
Oh, gotcha.
I think it's cocked.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with John that we, there's no urgency to get something out because there's a deadline tomorrow. We meet once a month. And I think that we, as official as we are, could post approved minutes only. I, I don't think one person should be giving an opinion on this board of what the board is doing. You know, I, I, you know, I think I could probably write something.
I'll step back.
On my opinion, but not, but not anything official at all. I'd, I couldn't, I, I don't, I agree with John. You, um, it, the minutes, we could...
I don't think I want to function under those parameters.
Okay, great. I love, literally, you guys may hate it, but I love this conversation. I find this the most intriguing thing about how government works, about how opinions work, about how information flows, all of that, right? And so, uh, and we live in a small town and I don't worry about the things that Jim is worried about, even though I see how what he's saying is real. If we're writing stuff the board doesn't like and we work under their parameters, I get all that. So, uh, and, but from Stanley's point of view, it's the same thing. Bro, if I'm gonna write some, I ain't gonna ask anybody permission for what I'm writing. That's my opinion. If you want to write it, you write it then. And if you don't want, and so I'm kind of with all of that. What I think I'm gonna do, hold on. What I think I'm gonna do is I'm gonna present it to the board and see if they're comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with Stanley Cooper as a human being not to write anything crazy that's gonna scare me or the opinion of the board. I think it's good that we get information out to the public. And if an article written by Stanley does it, then I'm for it. If Jim wants to write it next week, if we all want to take a turn and I don't, we can all do that too. But it is, it's cumbersome. And that's why I, I sympathize with Stan, because I'm like, dude, I'm gonna go through this whole thing, writing this article, and then I'm gonna ask permission. I'm like, eh, I'm off. Jim?
Yeah, I, I don't agree with John Weigold saying that it's okay for Harry to write something. Harry can write anything he wants, but whatever he writes, it's a his personal opinion. It cannot be interpreted as the board. So anybody can write anything they want if they're part, but they have to say, this isn't, they, they can say, this is my opinion, not necessarily the opinion of the board. That's just my, that's just...
So you're talking about a caveat right up front.
Steve, I think what they're looking for in this publication is the voice of organizations, not personal opinion. There aren't very many opinion pieces in it. So the voice of the organization is what they seem to be seeking.
Stanley, how do you see that statement?
Well, I guess the thing to do then is like when, um, when the, uh, the minutes are approved, I suppose what should happen is just that is forwarded to Jack. And then nobody has to write anything other than passing on the minutes.
Or, or what you do is in the minutes, you put what you're gonna write. And if everybody approves it, then it's the board-approved opinion piece. They can just get that out of the minutes.
Yeah, but then we're thirty days behind.
Yeah. Yeah, that, 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 um, I agree.
Okay, Stan could have brought his piece he wants to submit tomorrow. Had he brought it today, he could show it to us. We could say, yeah, it looks good, publish it. And, and we don't need the master board to care about it. Because we're, we, that's the same advice we're giving the board itself. We're just publishing it so it's, gets a broader, a broader, um, view. That's just thought.
Joyce, weigh in with something wise.
I do, I do the minutes, that's all I do. And I try to...
John, do you have, John, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I, I, I agree with Jim's last comment on the board, uh, that they, you know, um, they've always gotta, you know, they're gonna be looked at, they could comment all they want as a private individual. But, um, it's a, it's a gray line, um, that they're in an official capacity. So everyone will look at them from that, that filter. And so, um, you know, if I posted, if I posted something on a personal note saying, hey, we should, we should build out the East Ranch, you know, that's my, that could be my personal opinion or not. But if I said something like that, everybody would look at it through the filter and lens of, you know, me as the general manager.
Well, John, you heard me say that I wouldn't do that.
Correct.
And what I don't want to, I don't want to be muzzled, though. I mean, I refuse to be muzzled.
I'm not saying muzzle you at all. All I'm saying is, uh, no, I'm not, uh, quite the opposite. Uh, I'm, um, uh, just suggesting that, uh, you consult the board first, that's all.
I think somebody else ought to do it. I don't want to do it.
Understood. Uh, I will, I will, uh, I will talk to the board in my presentation. We'll see where they're at with that. And I will, uh, reach out, I'll reach out to Jack too and tell him where we are with our, with our thing there. All right, we're gonna have to move on.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, okay, that gets us into Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Report. Kitty, you got anything for us?
Uh, just a little bit. Uh, we continue weekly weeding, um, all over the ranch. And there's been, uh, an increase in volunteers who I think want to get out and do something. One second. Oh, uh, we moved a bench. The Ranch Hands bench was deteriorating and it was very close to the Angel Bench on the Upper Marine Terrace. So it was moved, another bench was installed in the woods. And that is now the Ranch Hand bench. So one person noticed, one couple. Um, but there hasn't been an increase in benches. But we have one more bench to go and we're gonna put another stone bench out on the Marine Terrace, um, in the Upper Marine Terrace with a good view. Uh, we've had greeters on the ranch every Saturday at one entrance for the month of August, um, to talk to people and talk to them about behavior on the ranch and what the ranch is. Labor Day, we're going to have a pop-up sale off the ranch at the South Windsor entrance, um, just off the ranch. So there'll be people there from probably nine to two on Saturday this weekend. So that'll serve dual purpose of being greeters for people and explaining the one-way route and also promoting Friends of Fiscalini Ranch Preserve.
Thank you, Kitty. Uh, any questions for Kitty?
Kitty, um, you said that there were some, um, in the office, there was a, an additional little holder for putting, um, uh, walking maps?
Yeah, I haven't gotten it out yet, Stan, I'm sorry.
To the dog park?
Onto the dog park, yeah. But, um, uh, I will give it to Carlos to put out, because I, I don't feel comfortable doing that. That would be something he should do, so. But I haven't forgotten, I'm sorry, I haven't gotten to it. We actually, as it turns out, have five of them in the office as replacements for breakage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, public comment, haven't even checked. Anybody from the pub, public with us hanging out? Fourteen, boom. Anybody from there want to make a comment?
Hey, Steve, it looks like Julie would like to, and then Claudia Harmon.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, Julie, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm coming to you on behalf of the Skate Park Initiative. And, uh, we've made great progress. What I do want to add is that we have no intent of slowing down. Uh, what I mean by that is we're out there every Friday from two to three. We've now gotten organized with a, what we like to call a positive message. Um, and that was working with CCSD and, and Harry to kind of restructure where we originally were to get some attention. And so that new message is specifically, we want to skate. We've got, uh, close to 1,200 signatures. I strongly believe there's tremendous community support for the skate park. Um, I'd like to field actually some questions because, um, I, I think there's, when I say mixed review, we're trying to understand where both PROS as well as CCSD sits on this issue. Um, we're also at a point, Steve, where we have aligned with Cambria Community Council, uh, Suzanne Kennedy over there. They're willing to step up and allow us to be a 501(c)(3) so that we can start taking in private donations. We started doing that last Friday. We were very hesitant to take private dollar until we had a proper way of doing that. So right now, it is a skate park initiative. We have a Facebook page up, we have an Instagram page up, we have a placeholder website up. The goal of that is for people to be able to download additional signature forms. Uh, we're working on the mission statement, like, right now with the kids. The kids are a huge piece of this because we want them involved in this process of understanding how important their voice is. So it kind of gives you at least a little bit of an update. Every week gets a little bit more organized. I say that because we were kind of reactionary in the beginning, quite frankly, because the park was taken abruptly. Um, and we had to be able to respond to that. And that meant rallying some parents and getting kids organized and getting some way of being there consistently so people could see our voices in our faces. So I'm happy to field questions, I love questions.
Well, we're not necessarily gonna take questions during public comment, just because of government code, let's say. But we will be able to discuss it on the agenda item.
Great.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Haley?
Okay, the next person is Claudia Harmon. Claudia, go ahead and unmute yourself.
I was trying to figure out how to unmute myself. I've not done this before, so I realize that you, you have control of that. Um, I was, I wanted to ask something actually of, since you're sort of involved with the Fiscalini Ranch. I want to know if the Fiscalini Ranch has been surveyed. Let me know that, can I just ask that question?
I'm gonna say yes to that. Not that we want to get into back and forth, even though I love it. But yeah, the ranch has been surveyed in the last couple of years.
Okay, so what, Beautify Cambria is interested in putting in a Lee of Trees on the public, uh, the, the county public right-of-way area of that. And so in order to do that, we needed that survey. So I, I've been trying to get ahold of someone like Kitty to find out if it's been surveyed. And I know it's been in the works for a long time. Uh, so if it has been surveyed, then I just need to, uh, see if Kitty can't give me a, a copy of that map. I need to submit it to Public Works so we can submit our, um, our plan. We're thinking of doing oaks and toya on which are native. And the reason I tell you is because it has to do with open space and what we plan on doing. There are trees on the opposite side of Cambria Drive, uh, that have been put in, you know, next to the parking lot and then up above. And so this would kind of complete that a Lee of Trees, Alley of Trees. Take a long time, but we think that will be a nice entrance into our town. So it's just more information for you and then I need that one thing. And then you will be talking about the toilet on East Ranch today?
Yes.
Okay, I will talk about that at that time. Uh, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Claudia. Okay, there you go. Uh, other than that...
Steve, I actually have one more person that would...
Okay, Haley, go ahead, Sarah. Sarah, go ahead.
Good morning, you guys.
Morning.
Just wanted to reiterate, um, that we are here for the skate park. I'm actually looking at Cyrus right now. He would like to speak, however, he's in his math class right now, so he can't. Um, but just want to reiterate, we're here, want to participate in the rebuilding of the skate park. Um, at the location that it currently is, where it's been, across the street from the Vets Hall. As a parent, talking with other parents, um, just appreciating the importance of our kids being seen by the public and protected by the public. And then also creating a great place there for people as they come to our town. That looks beautiful for adults and kids alike.
Awesome, thank you, Sarah.
Of course, thank you.
Awesome, all right, let's get into Facilities and Resources Report. I do not see Carlos, do I, anywhere? John, do you have anything you want to report on that?
Yes, uh, I'll, um, just add one report. Um, Carlos has been, uh, swamped the last couple of weeks with his team, um, for, for a number of projects. And, um, uh, we are currently working on an issue with a very large pile of homeless belongings on the sidewalk in front of the Pocket Park near the post office on Center Street. And so Carlos is working with that, with the county sheriff, uh, to work through that. It's a, it's a pretty heavy odor down there, uh, filled with human feces. It's very hazardous, so, um, the homeowner next door had, um, thrown a lot of that from his property over the fence onto the sidewalk. So we're working through that issue right now, um, like I said, with the sheriff.
Welcome to Parks and Recreation and Open Space in Cambria.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, well, can I ask, did they change, did they move the, out that Honey Hut from the west side over to Cambria Drive?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. We, we have the, the restroom in the same location, as far as I know.
Didn't I not see an outhouse at Cambria Drive in the highway?
Correct, there's always been there, on one there, on, on the ranch.
No, this wasn't on the ranch. This was in that place where Claudia wants to plant the trees, right? Nobody saw that. Must have just, did you see it, Kitty? Thank you. Right, there was, yeah. Can you not talk?
It wasn't a, of, an illusion.
Yeah, thank you.
I saw it there too and I thought, huh, that's very enterprising to carry it across the highway.
And, oh, you think they moved it across the high, uh...
I don't know who moved it. Maybe, maybe because they were having a hard time with people going through the locked gate, they decided it was better to have it outside the locked gate. In that case, maybe over on the other side. I don't know if it's still there or not. I saw it a couple of days ago.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, so you're saying, uh, you're saying this Honey Hut is on the, on the street side or highway side of the fence line?
No, it's actually on the, on the side of the road that the Vets Hall is on. It's near the bank, it's on the bank.
On the harbor bank, yeah.
Well, that's very interesting. Is it no longer on the ranch?
I don't know if there was another one on the ranch. I just saw that one there and I assumed it was the one from the ranch, because my...
I tried to look through the one on the ranch and couldn't see it, so I thought it was that one.
Yeah, I couldn't look both sides.
Then I thought it was a Pinderada one or a fire one, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Well, we had a...
All right.
The, the background on, uh, on the gate is, we had vehicles, um, coming onto the ranch. So we had to lock that gate and provided a key to the vendors who access both the dumpster and the, uh, portage on there, the Honey Hut. And so, uh, to prevent, you know, private vehicles coming onto the ranch, uh, there was, I went through one of the homeless encampments and there was somebody drove their motorcycle in there. Obviously, this is all fire hazard potential. So to ward that off, we, uh, we, we had to lock that gate, unfortunately. Um, there, there's just every, every, uh, everything we do has second, third order effect. So, uh, maybe that locking of the gate became too much for the vendors. But, um, but Carlos hasn't mentioned anything like that to me, so I, I can't comment on it.
I, at this point, I just want to reiterate to everybody how burdensome that homelessness issue has been on the resources of this group, or even the limited resources of Carlos and everybody having to deal with that. I sympathize with that and wish I had an answer. All right, thanks, John, anything else? All right, see you none. We're gonna go to the consent agenda, which is the minutes. Can I get an approval from the minutes from August? Adolf submits, do I get a second? Joyce, seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, we're in. Stan and Jim, I assume you're in, even though, Jim, you're in, Stan? I don't see Stan. Uh, but we're still gonna pass with an abstention, I guess. Uh, and that's good. You got that, Joyce?
I do.
Okay, now let's go into the regular business, which is discussion regarding the Beautification and Infrastructure Grant, which is the $20,000 we got from the county to help us design the restrooms. Boom. Kermit, do you have anything you want to start us off with on that? Can we just start about this? Are we going to water or are they gonna force us into the pit toilet?
An unfortunate turn of phrase, Steve.
Stan, you got something? Kitty, do you want to weigh in on that? John, I was kind of hoping it was Carlos was gonna be here today to discuss that. I've heard that there's some pushback on the restroom facility.
Uh, I would say that the EIR said that, that you should, uh, the EIR I found confusing and contradictory. It said you should consider pit toilets, no flow, uh, no water. And then it also allocated an amount of water for the restrooms in the same document. So I would say that it was ambiguous at best.
Adolf?
As I recall, during some of these discussions, it was that when they were talking about sports fields and restrooms, they also talked about drinking water fountains, I think. And maybe that's the, uh, part that they thought we would use water for and the rest of it wouldn't.
That could be, I was just looking for that.
Quite a few years...
Yeah. I just read through for restrooms, because I knew we were gonna have this discussion.
Is there, is there a health issue with, uh, there being no water there that the health department would have jurisdiction over? I mean, is a pit toilet unsanitary?
I don't know if Kermit's on board here, I don't know.
Kermit, can you hear us?
They have them at all the national and state parks, so apparently they're acceptable.
Acceptable.
I mean, they, they use them everywhere, they use them here in Cambria.
I could, if, if you don't mind, I'll weigh in again on this issue. When, uh, when we brought this up and I went to the county, uh, and I agree that the EIR is somewhat ambiguous, but the county much prefers to have water in the, in that toilet. They don't want to do pit toilets. They do them some places where there is no access to water and it's so far away. So they will do them. It's not like it's, um, gonna hurt anybody. But the, um, the interpretation that, um, Steve had was that if you limit the amount of water you use by having low-flush toilets and faucets that, you know, have the little drizzles out of it and everything else, that it, it meets the, the criteria of the EIR, which is to, is to minimize the use of water. So he would permit a, a toilet with, uh, with that caveat. And in, if, if, if the county would permit it, and they having to have contributed $500,000 toward the purchase of the ranch for active use of, on the East Ranch, that it makes sense to do the best structure that's safe for kids, can handle the volume of, of people that might be there for a ballgame or whatever. And how we treat it as far as the homeless goes, that's another issue. Whether you keep it locked, unlocked or whatever, that's a whole, that's a whole nother thing. But whether we need one and whether we should have one that is in the 20th century... But whether we need one, and whether we should have one that is in the 20th century, 21st century, I would strongly have low flow water use in that, in that facility.
Does anybody disagree with Jim's assessment there? And Kermit, we're still not got you yet?
Yes, is there a non potable water source in that area that we could tap into?
There is. The well that the Phillips used for their home, that well has, is un, it isn't capped, or it's capped, but it's, it still exists. And it was gonna be used for watering the soccer fields. To have that water devoted to the toilet, I think, would be a, an alternative that would be reasonable.
So we could actually have a situation where we had the toilets themselves be non potable water, and then a drinking water being potable water, correct?
That would be a possibility. I don't, yeah.
Yeah, that would come in on the design phase of the whole thing.
And the $20,000, what you're trying to do, Steve, or what I think this board should do, is to take that $20,000 and devote it for what it was given to us for. And that is the design and permitting of the toilet. Now we're, now we have to go out and get money to actually build it. But that is the direction I would suggest. I would mean that we use that money and move forward with the design of a toilet that minimizes the use of portable water to all extent possible.
Yeah. Well, that's the auspices in which we took that money. So yes. Joyce, anybody? Adolf?
I agree.
No, I agree. I, I thought we had settled that in one of our meetings, that we would use the, the grant basically to design the toilet.
Kermit is working on something.
Are we just, are you all just refining the, the basic toilet design that you have? Is that what you want to do? Or do you have, is there any option for input at this point?
Oh, I'm gonna say there's lots of room for input. We have just basically dug through some files of paper and looked at the options. You know what I'm saying? We don't, haven't really got anything official.
Let me throw something out there, then. One of the things that I have found in the past that reduces the amount of time that people, people spend in the actual restrooms, so it increases turnover, so you serve more people, is to put the hand washing sink outside, not in, in the men's or the women's, but outside, and it's a shared trough type situation. I've done, I did that in a previous restroom, because we were serving children, and children love to play with water. And they'll be in there forever playing with water, and then no one else can go into the restroom. Because they're, and they, well, it just creates all sorts of mischief. It also reduces the privacy of those areas for bathing. So if you have it outside, you'll reduce the use of that site as a impromptu shower for homeless people, if it's outside. The drawback is, you can't, you'd have to lock the, either turn off the water or have a perimeter gate. So have it within some walls and have the gate outside rather than the gate on the doors, lock the doors. But it makes everything less attractive.
Yes. These are, these are, thank you Kitty. These are all fine points that we will discuss and kind of have discussed. And that's why we want to get on the actual design, so we can make those final decisions and move forward with the price. Jim?
Yeah, I'm just gonna suggest that if we contract with civil design studios with the, the access to the sewer and the access to water and permitting, the actual structure itself, I think the money will be eaten up by the time you get the permit. And the act, the design of the structure itself might have to know where you're putting different drains. And that's what civil design studios does. And making sure that the ground is flat, and, and coming up with what the pad should be, and so on and so forth. But now when we're talking about where we have, you know, whether we have a sink outside or inside, that should be part of that process, maybe. But as far as the surfaces and things like that, I don't think that's, the money's gonna be gone by that time, as far as the construction of it.
Yeah, yeah. Adolf?
As I recall, Kermit was sent a couple of emails out. Also, part of the discussion we had during the last meeting was that we would basically just define for whoever is going to design it, the kinds of things that we'd like to have in it. And I know that Kermit wanted surfaces that were non vandalized types, so forth and so on. And so it seems like that particular list would be part of it. But, but the, he was also, I think, looking at the existing toilets that the CCSD has in different locations, whether or not we would build it that way, or some other way, or use a kit. So we still, we're in that initial discussion of what kind of design we'd like to have on the ranch.
Yes. Joyce, you got anything?
No, I, I, I like Kitty's idea that eventually we'd have the water out and, you know, locked up at night, but open for people to be outside. That makes good sense to me.
Yes, I agree. Okay, so do we need to, I, I don't feel like we're gonna get permit. So we need to move on. And are we gonna vote to move forward and spend that money? Yeah, right?
Yeah. Well, how are you gonna spend it, Steve? Are you just gonna go and get a, get a quote from civil design studios? I think we can achieve them.
Right.
And they will outline exactly what they're gonna do, and they'll try and spend all the money, and, and then we approve that. So I think we get them.
Carlos is gonna be the liaison between civil design, right? John, are you with that? Mr. Weingold?
He's busy.
Yes, I was unmuted.
Am I waiting?
Steve, before you take, we do have a to speak.
Yeah, I see Claudia there, yeah. All right. Let's let Claudia go, then.
As a, let's see, and it's not an agent, but a commission of the CCSD. I think you're required to get bids before you hire one company. I think that that would be prudent and also legal. The other thing is, is that you seem to be going ahead with this project. And I don't know if the public wants this. I was involved, you know, I go way back, 34 years. I was involved in purchasing the east west ranch. And, well, it was east ranch, west ranch back then. And we never, ever wanted any kind of development. Maybe this $500,000 you mentioned earlier is driving some of this. I talked to Carlos about the bathroom. He said, before you put the ball field in, you have to have a bathroom, which I think is kind of a screwy thing personally, because you're gonna have a bathroom, it'll be locked all the time, because there'll be nothing going on to be, to use it. So the highest and best use of my money as a rate payer is not going to be a toilet that sits out there in the middle of a, of a field, where you possibly have maybe three people taking their dogs. I just, I don't know about the way you've interpreted the water, Kitty, but I know that when that ranch was purchased, we never, ever wanted any kind of buildings on it. It was to be open space, a preserve. And I think that you need to consider that as you move forward. There's the water that may have been conflicting in the report may have been for possibly watering vegetation or something like that, but it was never meant to, for a toilet. So I think we need to go back to, and Steve was around back then, and maybe Joyce was too, Owen Stan was back there then, too. So, you know, some of you real, you know, remember that we never, ever wanted this. And you're gonna get a lot of pushback from the community when you go forward with this. It's gonna end up, probably ended up going, you know, to the, to the coastal commission. I mean, people are really gonna fight it. I've, you know, I know, because I hear, I, you know, I get little emails, and people tell me things. I don't know why. They just tell me. So I just want to let you know that before you just go ahead and, you know, bulldoze through with this, because you may be wasting your time and your money on something that shouldn't be done. And the other thing that I'd like to say quickly is that composting toilets have been put into state parks for many, many years. They function very well. They were, they, they're just, they just, they just function very well. And the other thing is, is that if you need a bathroom of some sort for a ball field, you're going to put in it in many years from now. Maybe a porta potty might be the, the best solution for the time being. They make very nice ones with little hand washing stations. We have them for the homeless. I think that the, the toilet is going to be a great place for the homeless to, to gather. And I think that needs to really take into consideration. So I will speak more later on a subject, probably next month.
Awesome. Great. Thank you, Claudia. Okay, John, is John there? Jim?
Hi, I am.
Hey, we don't need, we don't need to take bids on the planning stage, right? Because it's under a number?
Generally speaking, yeah. Generally speaking, we have to get bids on everything. Anything. So, you know, they'll have to, you know, unless it's already in the budget. So not something like design, that, that all has to go through the board. You'll have to make a recommendation to the board that you want to have a design, design, you know, the design created. And, and then I'll, I'll work that with, with the staff, go out and get the required number of bids. You just have to worry about, at this point, do you want to make a recommendation to the board to go ahead with a design? Yes or no?
Yeah, right? Are we all with that?
Yes.
Adolf?
Do we have to go through RFP here, then? Do we have to have a request for proposal and put it into the public domain? Or can we do it because we're already connected with civil design? Is that a question for John, I guess?
Yeah.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I wondered, based on your response, that do we have to go through a request for a proposal, an RFP, so to speak, in a general sense, invite other people in? Or because we're already connected with civil design, can we just stay with them?
Generally speaking, I have to get three bids on everything. There are certain areas where I don't have to, but I would have to run that through our council first, district council.
Yeah, the reason I asked the question is, we've had phase one. Phase two has always gone through civil design, and I forget the other person. And so I thought that was just an ongoing process we had going.
John, if, if you don't mind, I think it's just a quick phone call with, with the council on the dollar amount being $20,000. The grant from the county has been directed to our board to decide what to do with it. And Steve actually wrote the grant. And civil, and to, to his point is that civil design studio has done phase one, and this is just a continuation of that. I think a quick call could clarify that for us.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to move forward with this process, and I'll present it to the board on Thursday.
I move that we contract with someone to do the design and permitting of a bathroom on the east ranch.
Do I get a second?
I'll second it.
Joyce, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye or raising your hands.
Aye.
All right. We're moving forward with that. All right, next topic. The skate park would like us to recommend the location of the skate park staying in the same spot, so that they can start publicizing that. They feel a little, they just want some, to substantiate that they're raising money for that location. Jim, go ahead.
I move that we recommend to the board of directors that the best use of that, the past skateboard location is a new skateboard, skateboard, skateboard park.
There's a second. Any more discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Are we all in favor of the recommendation on the skate park? Yes. All right. Claudia, do you have something you would like to weigh in on?
I just wanted to mention that Beautify Cambria has talked with some of the skate park people, and we might be working together with them to create some kind of a park, as well as a skate park. We feel that the highest and best use of that property would not be just a skate park, but also to enhance it as, as a park. Because you, you don't want to have a facility that's only for 20 kids skating. You know, you want it to be something that the community can use. And I think that's something important to keep in mind as you move, move forward with your approvals on this, on this project. And we are in favor of the project, but we think needs to be more than just a skate park. Thanks.
Thank you. I agree with that. Jim?
I agree also. I think that's a good comment. And the kids like to, you know, skate on benches and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, yeah. Good. All right. Julie, would you like to comment?
Thank you very much, Claudia. It has been such a pleasure. We recently connected, Steve. So I just want to reinforce Claudia to say, we are very much looking forward to working with them. I think there's tremendous opportunity in making this space beautiful, and making it a part of healthy living for our community and our kids, and bringing it into also being somewhat of a park with, with all that Claudia is doing with her team. So there's just tremendous potential in that piece of property. And I just want to chime in really quick and say, thank you, Claudia. We're very much looking forward to working with you.
Great. Awesome. Anybody else got anything on that? Nice. Perfect. Moving on. Let's get into the ad hoc committee. Okay, so three putting together a committee to prepare a list of parks, recreation, open space projects, priorities, and costs. The board was a little frustrated that they didn't know what we were doing. So they want a list of our priorities and how much they're gonna cost. Jim and Adolf, that's the ad hoc committee.
Oh, we are?
Yeah, you and Adolf. I just appointed you. That's an executive order. Now executive orders rule the day. Go ahead. Does anybody, I mean, like, I sympathize with them where they're coming from. But, you know, I, you know, I'm not a real goal oriented person.
Well, as long as we're on the subject, and I think that, maybe I'm summarizing what I think the board is, what the pros commission has had as priorities over this period of time. And, and I think that what happened is somebody saw, hey, there's a bunch of money out there, so let's use it for a forester, or let's use it for something else. And we are Parks, Recreation, and Open Space, but I think that, this is just my personal opinion, the district has great guidance from a fire perspective, forest perspective, from CAL FIRE. And some people don't like CAL FIRE, but CAL FIRE, that's what the CCSD needs to focus on, is the, the fire prevention and use resources to help them. And we don't need to get somebody to talk about the different kinds of trees that are existing. So I think that the first priority is now all of a sudden it's become a skate park. And, and very closely tied with that is to get a, a, to get a bathroom on the, on the ranch for active use, because that is exactly what the, the east ranch has been devoted to. And then if you read through the documents, the only thing that's left is that a future plan will be made. We've already done the plan, is what we're gonna do, and we can move forward on the, on that plan. So those two things, we can come up with costs on each of those two things. And I'd be, be glad to work with Adolf and come up with something at next meeting, and come up with some other priorities. If somebody, if the public wants to talk about them, I'd be glad to look at those open space opportunities. But I think our money will have been spent by, by those two projects.
All right. Joyce? All right. Joyce?
I think that the projects that we've laid out, the skate park and the bathroom, are engulfing us. And we actually need no other, except some picnic benches or something like that. But, you know, I think that's our main priority, or has been.
And Steve, you know that if we get a bathroom there, and if we get, and if we get the skate park people starting to put private money into the skate park, I think a great idea would be that all the money that we're expecting to get in that grant is that we match dollar for dollar anything the skate park people come up to, up with. And if they come up with $30,000, they'll be able to do a good number with 60. And, and then the rest of the money essentially doesn't need a match, because you already got the 30,000 there. And it can be devoted to another project, probably the, the bathrooms.
Yes. I'm curious on how real this other grant money is. And is it the grant, is it reimbursement grant money, which I have been told is a little bit of a different category than just straight grant money?
Right. There we did have a comment, I think, from Elizabeth Bettenhausen, I think it was, who said that it wasn't just restricted to parks and recreation. There are other things, I guess, in that grant that were, that people applied for, whatever way they have to, that they could possibly be funded for their particular idea. So in a sense, we're almost not in competition, but we're also in a situation where we would have to be, I guess, identify what we'd like to have, but yet it would have to be then passed on to whether or not to confirm, excuse me, conform to the grant money itself. So we're kind of in a situation, I think, where we have planned the community park several years ago, and we've done phase one, and we kind of are kind of in our second phase, and our third phase, and the fourth phase, whatever the case is. And we had a full design for what the community park was going to be. And so right now, we're just basically, as you said, we're just basically picking into phase two, which was the restroom. But in the original, the original part was also the sports fields, et cetera. And under, as I recall, under the original design for the ranch, there was the East Ranch as an active, or what they called it, active recreation versus the preservation of the west side of the ranch had a certain boundary. And as I recall, also, the county had put in a half million dollars for us to develop a community park. That was several years ago. I'm not sure what happened to that money. So I think it's just a matter of us, as Jim said, we'll have to sit down, we'll have to think about where we are and where we're going.
Anybody else?
Yes, John, I got a couple of thoughts.
Go ahead, John.
So, this is just my perspective from my cheap sheets. So basically, I'm ready to apply for a $177,000 grant. I went to the board. The board doesn't know what they want to spend it on. Go ask the Prose Commission. Put us a list, together a list of priorities with, with costs, so they can be informed and vote and approve something. But so, my biggest fear right now is we're gonna be caught in a circular indecision on what to spend 177,000 on. It's less about the details on what costs are covered, how it's reimbursed, et cetera, et cetera. All we really need the Prose Commission to do is decide, number one, we want restroom built. Number two, we want the skate park done. Number three, if there's any money left over, we do, we'd like to do number three, four, and five. How much each costs on a list? And I, we can take that then to the board, and they can tell the general manager, go off and execute. And I'll go, be happy to go do that. But right now, we gotta decide what we want. And so that starts with the Prose Commission on putting a list together. Number one, board, this is what we want, this how much it's gonna cost. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. Jim, are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that, and our list is complete. We have, we have the restroom, and we have the skate park. I don't, I can't find anything important unless somebody comes, comes to us. And the only two, the only person that came to us was the skate park people. And that will consume the $170,000. To come up with a third thing to dilute the, the focus on those two things is, is just gonna throw more confusion
Yeah, I agree.
Into, into the decision that the board's gonna make. These are the two things we think. And number three, if they think that there's a number three, their constituents are asking for number three, let them throw some number three on the list, but don't, maybe Stan's got an input on this.
Yeah. Number three, it seemed to me would be, remember when Placentia came and talked about a, a smaller soccer pitch for young kids? Remember that they wanted to do that thing down where the, where we've said we're gonna have the skate park?
Right.
I wonder if it's possible to put something like that in by the dog park?
Yeah, but
As a third.
Yeah, but we can't put that in until the bathroom.
Right.
That's, okay. So that's why I said like three.
Yeah.
Bathroom, skate park.
And, and not only that, if, if something's done on the ranch, rather than having a small little pitch, you could put a soccer, real, real soccer field.
Yeah.
It's gonna be cheaper to put a soccer field there than it is to construct
And we do have other places the kids can play now.
Yeah. So I, over the years, we, at different times, have developed goals and things at the beginning of the year. And sometimes you get too many and you don't do any of them. I like the idea of the two things. We're trying to build the bathroom. We're trying to build the skate park. That's where we're going. Jim and Adolf are gonna be our ad hoc committee. You guys are gonna get a little discussion together. You're gonna get a little piece of paper. We're gonna vote on that next month, and we're gonna go forward with those things. In the meantime, I'm gonna tell the, the big board on Thursday what we're doing and let them know what that is. And that will consume the money. Adolf?
I agree.
Also, I think in some respects, we need kind of a conceptualized drawing of what that skate park might be. I mean, from the folks
Well, I think
Pushing for skate park.
I think this, this discussion is stimulating that with them right now. I see Julie and Shara both now moving forward on trying to get us a picture and some options of costs of things that will be simple, more, more complicated and very, you know what I'm saying? And get going on that. Jim?
I, I do know that permit has a price, a ballpark price on a toilet, the completion of the job. And I think that we have in our minutes someplace the cost of putting the skate park out there. So for, if, if, if the board agrees that Adolf and I can come together, grab those numbers, so that when you go to the board, you say our number one priority is, is what, is, is the toilet, and number two priority is the skate park, then the board will have enough to say, okay, John, go get the money and show us a third option on what we can spend the money for, but go for it. And then rather than waiting until next month
Yeah.
We'll have to come up with a third thing or numbers. The numbers are in our minutes someplace.
Okay. The meeting, my meeting with them is on the 10th. Can you get that to me by the 10th?
Sure. Adolf, we can do that, can't you?
I think so.
Yeah, I guess that's possible.
Okay, good. Anything else? Joyce, you comfortable?
Totally agree. Yes, totally, totally.
Dan?
John, is that good enough for you?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
John, you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Can I hear from Julie?
We're so excited. This is such a great conversation, and we thank you. Jim, I just want to kind of direct a quick thing to you, and that is in regards to being stimulated on drawings and things to that nature. We're happy to move in that direction to get more organized. Again, we've been just kind of waiting to make sure that, one, we're all in agreement on this location. And two, as far as public funds goes and fundraising and that, having some idea of what that number is. And I've talked to Steve briefly about this, but if it's 35,000, give us that marker, right? We'll write, we'll fundraise the 35,000 if we know that you guys are gonna meet us somewhere on the other side. So we're listening, and we're, we're willing to put in the work. We just, we need some direction to know that we're doing it the right way, and that we're doing it in a way that is in, you know, agreement with what, what you see as well. I hope I'm making sense.
Yes, but could I ask a question? What, do you have a number in mind as to what your target is for, for the skate park, so that we can tell Steve, and Steve can put that number behind the priority on, on the 10th?
Yes. I believe this park will cost every bit of $200,000. Now, we haven't gotten an architect involved. I mean, I, there's a lot of, you know, we, we're looking at doing all concrete versus putting any, you know, before it was wood. We've got to move in a direction of concrete for many reasons. Again, we haven't flushed that out, Jim. That number can go down. We'd like the kids also involved in this process. We want the kids to bring their designs to the table. They may be unrealistic, but it will make them feel like they're part of this process, which I think is really critical. So we just haven't, we have not even gone in that direction yet, Jim, because we haven't known how serious it is in the sense of, can we even move this project forward with CCSD having the land and Prose involved on, on the other side with a potential grant. So we will certainly get more organized and get you some numbers, if that's what you're looking for.
Okay. Well, I was just looking for a number for, for Steve to talk about on Tuesday, on Thursday, but.
Well, my numbers, we can build something simple for something cheap, or we can build something more complicated for something more. You know, it's like my wife saying, how much does the house cost? It depends on what kind of house you want to build, you know? I'm encouraged by Claudia's, you know, interest in the project, too, in that you say, oh, it's $200,000 for a skate park. But if it's $200,000 for a skate park, community park that I can sit at and eat my lunch, too, then that doesn't sound as expensive to me.
Okay. So Steve, we'll get back to you, I guess, if everybody agrees that Adolf and I can come up with a number. But without talking to Adolf offline, if you said 200,000 for a skate park and up to 300,000 for a toilet, and let's try and get the 70 right away to apply toward that goal, I think the board can make a decision with that.
Okay.
Not to exceed, you know?
Do we need a motion?
Go ahead, Joyce.
Do we need a motion to finalize any of this? Or we're just letting them decide?
I move that Steve present to the board at his Prose Commission report that the priorities of the Prose Commission is to build the, a toilet on the East Ranch at a budget of about $300,000, and a skate park at up to $200,000. And, and John will, and direct John to go get the grant to help kick that off. That's what I, that's my, my motion.
Is there a second? Okay, I'll second up.
All right, any other discussion? All right, we're gonna take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. Julie, real quick, you guys want to add something there?
Yeah, I just want to speak to Jim. Jim, please know that number is an inclusive number. In other words, we do envision this more than just a little, a concrete pad for skateboarders. That we really want this to be something this community can be very proud of. And that brings in potentially some art. We're talking about some mosaic brickwork, you know, where people can buy bricks and there's contribution in that area. Again, working with Claudia, that hillside, to our understanding, is also owned by CCSD. So please correct me if that is incorrect, but I'm understanding that whole hillside to also be part of the project. And, you know, Claudia and I, again, have briefly spoken about beautifying that hillside into some tiered levels and bringing in some landscaping. So I see way more than just concrete, Jim, just to make sure that we're clear. I think we're seeing the vision to be a much better inclusive value at that 200,000. And again, it's a number I'm grabbing. I'd rather go high than go low, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Adolf?
I talked about conceptualization of this skate park. It would be good for Jim and I, I think, to have, I don't know, some simple drawings or whatever, what Claudia and Sarah were talking about. And I'm not sure who would do it or how they would do it, but just sort of that conceptual idea of how big this thing might be. And give us an idea then of whether or not $2,000, 200,000 is enough, or not enough, or whatever.
Joyce?
I think Carlos had some drawings of skate parks, so we'd need to talk to Carlos.
Yeah, he's got some good stuff. Simple, but there. All right. All right, I'm gonna go. Claudia, very quickly, go ahead.
I just want to say that you might want to increase that number to 250,000, one, because I think the skate park is going to cost more than 200. And also, that would give us some matching funds for Beautify Cambria to do the landscaping. Landscaping can cost, you know, $200,000 by itself. If you're gonna landscape a whole hillside and terrace it, because we've looked into doing it, even a small project's about $30,000 to do that downslope there at, next to the Redwood Center. So it can, it can be very expensive, and I don't think we can pay for all of it ourselves. So I'd like to have that included in your, in your, in your talk to the CCSD, and maybe bring that up to 250, and that would help a little bit with that, if we want to have an all-inclusive, you know, park, skate park.
Awesome. Thank you. Shara?
Yes, I just want to say, too, I see that Kermit is not able to speak on here, but he has sent an email with some skate park ideas on varying levels. So he has done some footwork there. So he would be a good resource as soon as you can get him able to speak.
Yeah, and I just want to thank Kermit for not punching his computer over the last hour. He looks very angry.
I see that Haley is recording this show, so she can share that with Kermit to bring him up to speed. And if no one minds on your, that we adjust the community park, which includes a state park estimate at $250,000, this is gonna take several years for us to, to finalize and get in the ground. But John is just trying to get his first grant, and so 300 and 250 might be good enough. If it's okay with the rest of the board, that would be the direction you could take on Thursday.
Okay. Does anybody want to comment on that? We gonna change that?
Sure. I, I move that we change it to 250 on the, on the community park, skate park combo.
Second it.
Stanley, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I'll go with it, too. Adolf, are you with it?
No.
Okay, we're gonna go to 250 on that. That way we won't be shocking anybody. All right. Okay, anything else? That was a good meeting. Harry, I hope we got you informed on what we're doing. Stan, go ahead.
I just wanted to apologize for being pissed off earlier. I, I guess I let my, my temper get the best of me. But I, you know, having to be checked on what it is that I write kind of rankles.
I'm with you, Stan. I got you. I feel that.
You as a person can do anything you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But just, you can't do it in, as an auspice of But just, you can't do it as an auspice of.
Yeah, so I'll just continue to, anything that I put out there as a private citizen. I just, I don't want to have to go across the boss's desk.
I agree.
You know, I'm retired.
All right, everybody, we're gonna end this meeting. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's efforts. If you need me, you know, my cell phone. Right on, thank you.